Okay, the time is five thirty seven. I call the Lindup District Ninety-two School Board Meeting into session. Can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin, present.
For Member Alexander. For Vice President Hamon.
Present.
For Member Dawson.
Here.
For Member Morris, absent. For Secretary Taylor, absent. For Member Williams Wilford.
Present. Thank you. Now if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if we could have a moment of silence.
We ask everyone to mute their phones and put them on silent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have Spotlight on Success with music, Mark Edlund.
Good evening, community board members, administration and staff. Thank you so much for having us. So today we are going to be presenting some seventh grade students in terms of their GarageBand project. Ms. Walker?
That would be great. That would help out. All right. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Jackson, Ms. Aparia Sepora, Mr. Kenobi, family and friends who are here this evening and also streaming live. My name is Ms. Sharon Walker and I am the Music Director here at Lindup. It is a pleasure this evening to share with you the works of some of our seventh grade music appreciation students for this month's Spotlight on Success. To give you a brief overview of what you're about to hear, students were asked to complete back in February, a project through the iPad app GarageBand where students had the ability to freely create an original composition. Students were given concepts of what melody, harmony, and bassline sounded like, as well as the choice of genre or musical style they enjoyed the most to create this project. Students were asked to write a brief overview of their finished piece, which included naming their composition, identifying the genre, categorizing their loops into melody, harmony, and bassline, as well as reflecting on their overall bodies of work. This included both processes they enjoyed and barriers they overcame. In a moment, you'll hear a few pieces of work from students who are currently in music appreciation. Some of these were also featured during morning announcements during March is Music in Our Schools, celebrating how music is around us each and every day, created and celebrated by the National Association for Music Education over thirty years. Our first student up, I believe, is Ms. Zariah, and she's going to talk about her project.
Good evening. My name is Zariah.
Next we have Ms. Walker. Right, next we have Mr. Scott.
Good evening. My name is Jacque Scott.
And we have one more presentation from Kiz Eric Williams. He was unable to make it this evening. We appreciate your time this evening and please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Just one question. I hear us referring to loops and I may have missed it. What are loops?
So loops are pre-
Loops are a round of music that you can repeat or replay or delete.
I would like to thank each and every one of you. It's amazing how you have progressed at the different challenges that you've taken on, and we're very proud of you. Does anyone else have anything to say?
I did exactly what the Board President said. Good job, guys. I don't know if it was easy to make that music or not, but it sounded good. Can't tell that that's your first time, so good job and keep going. Definitely.
Thank you.
Keep going, guys.
Very good. Would any of you that are online like to say anything?
For Member Brian Dawson, job well done.
Thank you. If there are-
For Member, For Member Williams Wilford, congratulations. I come from a background, my brothers are musicians and they have all that fancy stuff. So congratulations and kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
And a special thank you to Mrs. Walker, who has worked diligently from the first day, and I remember the first presentation she gave and she talked about how she was going to grow the program, and we see it unfolding and unraveling right before us. So thank you, Mrs. Walker.
Thank you. Okay, next, are there any public comments?
There are none.
Thank you. On- For your request, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, there were two for your requests and they have both been satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, upcoming events and correspondence.
I'm sorry, since the meeting is being recorded, can you just state what the for your requests were?
There was one for your request from local labs asking what the mission statement of the school district was. The other one was from Smart Procure that we typically get about every two months, asking for a list of all of our vendors.
Is there, are there any other questions or concerns? Okay, with regards to upcoming events and correspondence, we ask that everyone would read the list that's provided on their own. But also, I would like to have a comment. I would like to thank everyone for the support, prayers, and their thoughts during the time that I was out with my sister. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve? The consent agenda?
I make a motion that the Board approve the Lindup District Ninety-two payroll for March twentieth, twenty twenty-three through April seventeen, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of, my papers say X, X, X.
Do you have, do you have, oh, can you read that?
In the amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Activity account reconciliation from March twenty-third, Lindup District Ninety-two. Accounts payable from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. First read of policies to one hundred, four sixty, five thirty, five ninety, five one twenty-five, five one fifty, five two sixty, six one thirty-five, and six two thirty. First read and adoption of policies, four forty, five two eighty, six two ten, eight twenty, and eight seventy, and the second read and adoption of policy, six two ninety.
Cheryl Griffin, I second. Are there any questions or discussions? If there are none, can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Vice President Hamon?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander? Absent. For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Abstain.
For Member Morris?
Yay.
Motion carries. Next we have all business. Cheryl Griffin, I'll read the motion. I make a motion that the Board approve the regular open session meeting minutes for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a second?
I second.
Are there any discussions? Can I get a roll call?
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Ms. Wilford?
I abstain.
For Vice President Hamon?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander? Abstain. For Member Morris?
Yay.
Motion carries. Can I get a motion for, to approve the regular closed session?
For, I make a motion that the Board approve the regular closed session meeting minutes for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Cheryl Griffin, I second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get a roll call?
For Vice President Hamon?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For President Griffin?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander? Absent. For Member Morris?
Mr. Morris?
Yay, I'm sorry.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next, we have an update on the school year Y E S program, and that would be Ms. Kiefer.
Good evening, Board of Education, administration, staff, and community members. We're really excited because this summer, twenty twenty-three, we will have three different programs to serve our children here at Lindup. So we'll have the Broadview Freedom School, the Extended School Year Program, which Ms. Kiefer will talk about, and then we'll also have our Traditional Lindup Summer Program. So I'm going to give this over to Ms. Kiefer to address the Extended School Year explanation.
Good evening, board members, administration, community, and staff. So an update for the Extended School Year, just as a reminder that the Extended School Year is a summer program specifically identified for students who have an I E P and has show regression throughout the school year on their I E P goals. We've identified twenty-six students that will qualify for our program. Their school day will go from eight fifteen to eleven thirty. We also, for this program, will need two teachers and three parent professionals. Theirs, their work hours will be from eight fifteen to twelve thirty because they will also have a planned time together. The rates for their pay is presented not to exceed seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Just some updates about what's been going on as far as preparing for this, preparing for the E S Y program. We have identified two teachers that, special education teachers, that will be running the two classrooms. I've met with them, one, just to kind of give, for them to give me some feedback on what, you know, what their thoughts are for the program. I've given them some guidelines for what the program needs to have. And so we've met a couple of times about that. We're meeting again now that they have the guidelines to present me with their lesson plans. So they will need to do lesson plans for this Extended School Year program. And then finally, we will meet again to, to have the parent professionals, once they are identified, to meet with the classroom teachers so they could clearly understand their expectations and their roles during this time. You have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions or concerns? If not, thank you so much for your presentation. Okay, number four, corrected action. Cheryl Griffin, I'll read number four, corrected action. I make a motion that the Board approve the twenty twenty-three E S Y program, not to exceed twenty-six students, grades K through seven, two teachers at thirty-three dollars per hour totaling four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents, and three parent professionals at their current hourly rate, estimated total of three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents, or an estimated grand total of seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, Monday through Thursday, eight fifteen A M. through twelve thirty P M., commencing Monday, June fifth through Thursday, June twenty-ninth, to be paid through the I D E A funds. Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns? If not, can I get a roll call?
For Member Alexander? Absent. For President Griffin?
Yeah.
For Vice President Hamon?
Yeah.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Morris?
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
I'm trying to get off, what's she?
What are you?
You're not muted.
For Mayor Morris, we can hear you.
For Secretary Taylor?
Motion carries. Next, we'll have a discussion on Lindup Twenty Twenty-three Summer School Program. Presenter, Ms. Sepor.
Good evening, community board members, administration, and staff. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. So I'm going to be talking about the traditional summer school. So that's going to be taking place Monday through Thursday, so Monday beginning June ninth through Thursday, June twenty-ninth, from eight A M. to one P M. Forty students were identified based on their regression in reading and/or math for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. In terms of their hours, so they will work from eight to one with thirty minutes of prep time. So eight o'clock to eight twenty-five will be breakfast. Eight twenty, eight thirty to twelve thirty will be two hours of reading, two hours of math, and then thirty minute prep time. You can see the rates there for the L S S A as well as L T A, not to exceed, so I need four parent professionals, four teachers, and not to exceed fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Any questions?
Are there any questions or concerns? If not, can I get a roll call?
I have a question. Out of those forty students that are identified, have their parents confirmed that they will attend?
No, they have not. We have not. We just identified them. We have not contacted the parents.
Anything for-
They haven't confirmed, no.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Vice President Hamon? For President Griffin?
Okay.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
For Member Morris? For Member Alexander?
If I could make a correction here, please forgive me. Can someone make the motion? Thank you.
Excuse me, Hannah. I make the motion that the Board approve the Lindup Twenty Twenty-three School, Summer School Program to be held Monday, June fifth through Thursday, June twenty-ninth, grades K through seven, four teachers at thirty-three dollars per hour totaling nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, and four parent professionals at their current hourly rate, estimated total of five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, or estimated grand total of fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars to be paid through the education.
Thank you. Cheryl Griffin, I second. And now we're sitting forward to the vote.
For President Griffin?
Yeah.
For Vice President Hamon?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander? Absent. For Member Morris? Absent. For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll have new business discussion on new security cameras, intercom systems, and new firewall. That would be Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, community members, teachers, staff, guests. So we're looking at replacing our camera system and our intercom system, which is all discussed at the last Technologies Committee meeting. So this includes installing Cat Six wiring in all the rooms, installing Cat Six wiring outside the school. Some cameras already have Cat Six wiring because they're new. Because its wiring is for data transmission. That's kind of what Cat Six wiring looks like, kind of like a big phone cord. So our current camera system is from about two thousand nine to twenty twenty. Our system reports a hard drive, it's a disk, takes up a lot of space. It's very bulky. It's very hard to get footage off of it. So what's a new system in April of twenty twenty-three do? A new system in April, current system reports at the four K quality, three sixty degree recording. Some cameras are playable through the cloud, records on camera itself, then get off the cloud that way. Some cameras have battery for backup, so if the power goes out. Some cameras have license plate readers. So someone, or a note picks up a student, we possibly get license plate off the car, and it has facial recognition, which could notify us of any bad people around our building, entering our system for facial, facial recognition, which is legal for schools in Illinois, because we're a public school. So let's discuss the camera system. Securing pricing for different vendors. We want to see what different vendors offer, different prices for different vendors. One vendor is allowing us to demo their product, which is nice, and the money comes from care funds. So this is our old camera system. This is a recording I took off of it from right down the street by the stoplight, and that's one person. This is what the new system would look like. It's magnificently different and zoomed in. You notice the car right there, it's a vehicle on there, and it's much more clear. It's a four K camera, too. And this is a recording of the camera, and that's me dancing around down there. So you can see me. I'm a little more clear, so this company is time enough to let us demo their product. And this does three sixty. This is from my phone. You notice this is live footage. At the time I did it, and it was just me moving around my phone, looking three sixty camera. That's our middle scrolling, and I'm going up, down, right, left, and I know Ms. Taylor was concerned about blind spots. Three sixty eliminates blind spots, because it's three sixty view, so it's pretty high tech. And those are three of the cameras that we, Mr. Valentine, installed in on the building for demoing, and there's a few more to install. So it'll show off what these, what one of the demos of vendors letting us do. Questions?
Are there any questions or concerns? I'll take it that there are not. Thank you. Very good job.
Okay, so now we're going to, now we're going to discuss replacing our intercom system. So our intercom system is a Simplex system. It's one bell intercom system. It, um, bells, intercom allow for entire school everywhere. Our system doesn't allow us to adjust volume in the classrooms. Our system doesn't sync time automatically. Our system only, only shows time, so it only displays time. Current intercom system was installed in two thousand and four by Simplex. Simplex no longer manufactures the intercom system parts, so it's basically getting your parts on eBay or use, use, because they don't make, they don't make them anymore. It's that old. And actually, Simplex is actually trying to sell us another system that, another vendor is trying to sell us as well, so it's, because Simplex got bought out as well, so it's, 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 it's kind of funny that they're like that, but. So what about Alyssa's Law? Alyssa's Law, Silent Panic Alarm to Law Enforcement with Notification of the Stroke, which approves response time to law enforcement. This is actually in our safety plan, in our life safety plan. This is related to Alyssa's Law, which is three states passed. Illinois is not ready for this law yet, but has a pass it, but it's probably coming to the future, whereas other states are passing it. And what our current system does, it'll play the time periods, also display messages around the building. If there's a message called blue up, for this example, it'll blink. You notice the yellow on the side, it's blinking. It'll allow you to record pre-recorded messages, select what bells ring in what rooms. Teachers can, we can have volume not ringing certain parts of the building, could be on their own schedules. Maybe for pre-K, they wouldn't want it to ring during, during, or not have bells at all during rest time. And our system doesn't allow that. This system won't allow that, so adjust that. It can display messages that can flash, as you can see up there, and internet will sync automatically to the time on the internet, not having to manually do that. And we discussed the Technologies Committee meeting, the hallway clocks. Technologies Committee liked the one in the middle. It's got the flash, flashes on there in the clock, as you can see. It's much more high-tech and speaker, so that would be in the rooms, the hallways. The rooms possibly would have the ones on the bottom, it'd display messages. And that's what a new system would do. Any questions, concerns?
I have one question. Can you explain to us what Alyssa's Law is?
Alyssa's Law was passed to Stoman Douglas School in Florida. Somebody, girls in Alyssa's, to do a response time by being able to see flashings. And it's only passed in three states right now. Hasn't made it to Illinois, but Illinois, New York, New Jersey, and Florida passed that law. Illinois usually follows New York's laws, a lot of things, so.
It's good to be proactive.
So, if it ever has, it would be very expensive. That way, if we did all this at the same time, it's in the life safety plan as well, flashers as well.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or concerns?
Just to let the board know, to be abreast, the clock will flash if we have a pool of urgency. That was the purpose of going with that particular clock.
Are there any further questions or concerns?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. The clock will do what?
The clock will flash, and if there's an emergency or anything, and alert us if something is happening, and it would be a silent, but everyone would know what the signals meant. And so thank you, Mr. Ellis, for looking diligently into this. I know that especially one of the incidents that we had, it was very, very grainy, very difficult to see, but you can see clearly with the new system. So thank you so much for doing your due diligence.
And Ms. Wilford, if you can see the screen on the right, you can see it kind of flashing in yellow on there as well for you, and it's saying initiated pull blues. You see the sample message right there.
Yeah, I do.
All right, so a final thing we discussed in the Technologies Committee was replacing the firewall. So we've been of our current vendor since two thousand and eleven. See the filter? See the filter was bought out by Limewise, and basically they don't have tech support anymore because they've been bought out. So why upgrade a firewall? Because, I mean, cybersecurity is a major concern to everyone. If we don't upgrade our security, we're going to be vulnerable to data breaches, hacks, malicious activity, viruses. So we looked at it, you know, top-notch security, did some research, talked to other tech schools, knowledge directors, and one of the biggest companies is Palo Alto Networks. They're located in California, so they're a United States-based company. And they're, they're over, they serve over seventy thousand organizations over a hundred and fifty countries, including eighty-five of the Fortune one hundred companies. Also on the stock exchange, NASDAQ, and this is what it would look like, and they're ten out of ten, out of the Fortune ten companies use them. Seven of the ten largest gas companies worldwide use them, largest oil companies use them as well, so they're a pretty big manufacturer of, of, of top-notch security. And the Technologies Committee had two options. Option one was have one firewall without backup, which is twenty-five thousand, eighty-one dollars and nineteen cents. The second option was to have two firewalls, so if one firewall goes down, the other one would kick in and keep going, so the internet would not go down. Because if one firewall goes down, the internet is down until the firewall gets replaced, which could be days or while, which was a concern to the Technologies Committee meeting. And the Technologies Committee board members in the committee like the second option, which is with backup, which is forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seven hundred and eighty-eight cents. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions or concerns? I'll take it there are not. Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Next, we're gonna have an update on the Freedom Summer School Program, Dr. Betts and Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, and good evening again, Board of Education, Administration, and Staff. Um, we are really excited about the Freedom School, so in order to operate the Freedom School, though, we do need a site director as well as four servant leader interns, those are, that is the Freedom School terminology for the teachers. We need four servant leader assistants, that, that is the Freedom School terminology for the paraprofessional. So that's a total of nine staff members, and you can see the layout of the projected cost. During the day, students will engage in Harambe, which is the coming together, it's chanting, it's singing, it's building self-esteem, um, acknowledging your own power and what you're capable of doing in terms of activating within your community. And then students go into an integrated reading program, we have adopted that from the Children's Defense Fund Freedom School from last school year, and we hope that at the end of this Freedom School, that we'll be able to apply to become an official CDF site for two thousand twenty-four. So we are asking the teachers and the staff members who engage in this program to spend a total of six weeks. And that's not including the training and all of the hours that go into preparing for this program. And so we recognize that we need to pay those staff members at a higher rate than we would typically pay within our teacher contracts, but because this is a Freedom School and not necessarily Lindop School, we are able to do that, and that would all come out of the grant. Students also will have opportunities to work with community partners, for example, The Answer Inc. will be involved. Um, we have Michael Romaine, who is one of our area journalists and very well-known, um, and, and many others as well, we have Lorenzo Weber from the Proviso Youth Services. Um, so, and also Mayor Katrina Thompson has also been really helpful and supportive with this project as well. So we're looking at having those partners work with the students in the afternoons. Um, we're really excited about this, we've interviewed teachers, um, we're recruiting students right now, we've identified them. Um, we're starting small, but we hope to grow this program in two thousand twenty-four and beyond. We do need to also have some town hall meetings and some parent informational meetings coming up, so in the next couple of weeks, look for that information, because that'll be coming out as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, Ms. Alexander?
Banner, um, I have a question, Dr. Betts, when you discussed the, uh, the training and the hours to prepare, that was for the educators, can you describe it, like what that would look like with the curriculum developing?
Yes, thank you for asking, so there is a curriculum that we're using, but it is really, really big. We need to pull the teachers and the paraprofessionals together to go through it piece by piece, and even though it's very well outlined, there's no way we could cover all of it in six weeks, we're gonna have to pick and choose as a team and try to pick the high-impact items that we need. The grant requires us to show ten percent growth in, um, in our reading over the six-week period of time. And so we do want to be really strategic about what we're selecting.
I have a second question, what, um, is the grade level that you would target for this?
Thank you for asking, I did not include that, so we will be looking at incoming fifth graders, incoming sixth, incoming seventh, and incoming eighth this year, we would like to expand that in the next years.
Thank you, I have no other question.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions or concerns?
Just a quick question, Ms. Taylor? Dr. Betts, well, Dr. Jackson, would this program run simultaneously with the regular school year, if we'd like after school or during class hour?
It's during the, uh, summer, and it is from June fifth until July twenty-first. The week of July first will be off, and also Monday, June nineteenth, in commemoration of Juneteenth.
So does this run parallel with Christmas?
Eight until three thirty, our day is extended, though, the others are out about twelve-thirty.
Yes, so summer school will end at the end of June, but this program will continue into July.
We'll also have to have as a requirement, uh, town hall meetings and parents, uh, meetings. Dr. Betts and I will be making phone calls to the parents, uh, this week. The students will also identify if they show any regression on the math scores.
Thank you, are there any additional questions?
I have a question for Dr. Jackson, Dr. Jackson, um, to your point, have there been a, a set amount of students that's been identified for this program?
We over-identify, the requirement is forty students, but we are over-identifying because we know everyone will not be able to participate.
Okay.
But the total that we can have is forty.
Forty, okay, thank you.
Thank you, are there any additional questions? If not, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the twenty twenty-
I'm sorry, my question is, how often will board get updates about this project?
We will have a weekly and a weekly update, and then we'll also present at the, uh, July Board, will be after the July Board meeting, but we'll have the outcomes, because there are also, um, a target that we have to meet of ten percent growth in just six weeks, and so it will be very rigorous and very robust, but it is also very, um, engaging as well. Did you have any other questions, Mrs. Wilford?
Professor.
Thank you, thank you. Again, this is Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the twenty twenty-three Freedom Summer School Program to be held at Lindop for grades five through eight, totaling seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars, four SLIs, forty-five dollars per hour, coming to forty forty thousand five hundred dollars, four SLAs at forty dollars per hour, totaling thirty-six thousand to be paid from the Freedom School Grant. Can I get a sec?
Tony Taylor, I second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? If not, can I get a roll call?
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Vice President Hammond?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander?
Yay.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yes.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Morris, Assistant.
Thank you, motion carries. If I get a, get a motion for the board to approve the contract on-site coordinator?
All right, Hannah, I make a motion that the board approve to contract one site coordinator at a total cost of thirteen thousand to be paid from the Freedom School Grant.
Cheryl Griffin, I second. Can I get a, a roll call?
For Member Alexander?
Yeah.
For Member Dawson?
Yay, sorry.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Vice President Hammond?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
For Member Morris, Assistant.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, can I get someone to make a motion on item five?
I make a motion that the board approves to recognize longevity of staff during a longevity celebration. Location is to be determined. Honors include Michelle Johnson, fifteen years, Jennifer Zinger, fifteen years, Tyler Hanson, ten years, Emily Erickson Betts, five years, Ashley Peterson, five years, Saron Edwards, five years, and Carolyn DeDarrow, five years.
Thank you, Cheryl Griffin, I second. Can we get a roll call?
For Vice President Hannah?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander?
Yay.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yes.
For Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Member Morris?
Motion carries. Can I get a motion for item six?
I make a motion that the board approve to recognize retiree, the celebration to be held at Chickies Bakery on Friday, May fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at five P M.
Cheryl Griffin, I second, can I get a roll call?
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Member Alexander?
Yay.
For Vice President Hammond?
Yeah.
For Member Dawson?
Mr. Dawson?
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Member Morris, Assistant, for Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll have a presentation on state of the district absences, tardies, and buildings and grounds. Mr. Kenobi, Mr. Valentine, and custodial staff.
Good evening, Board of Education, teachers, staff, and guests. I'm gonna share, uh, the tardy report that I shared at, uh, last week's, uh, policy meeting in regards to, uh, trends and, in, in tardies across kindergarten through eighth grade. Now, what I'm gonna focus on through this, this slideshow is, uh, the data in terms of before the implementation on Ja- uh, January tenth, where we switched to the tardy expectation, which we gathered from District eighty-nine. And also, I'm working with, uh, Maria Munoz over there, who is in charge of student services in collecting data over the years in terms of their success rates with that similar program and how long. But with this, I want to show you, uh, the data in terms of what we're looking for in terms of trends. So just pay attention as I, as we look at some of the data in terms of total tardies versus students. Now, mind you, we're looking for a trend as we go from the start of the school year, January hits with implementation. We should be seeing a downward trend, and as you can see with a lot of the grade levels, we're seeing that similar trend, which is, which is positive. Now, mind you, you're gonna see spikes in different grade levels, and those could be individual students. And when we see spikes like that in trends in certain months, we deal with students on a case-by-case. We get resources such as social work, maybe West Forty gets involved because it also has to deal with absences. Uh, the district admin meets with parents, uh, to wrap our arms around the families to figure out why we have these, these spikes. But the overall theme here is, is that we're heading in a dot, in a downward trend, which is great. And this, mind you, this has only been from about four months of implementation. Implementation usually takes years over time that you see positive trends, so this is great. So, some of these things that we're looking at policy is some of the things with research around what we're doing with this expectation is, is the four major themes is. Themes are, find out what's going on, which we're doing as building admin, Dr. Jackson gets involved with us as well when we meet with these families, making the beginning of the class important, implementing logical consequences and being consistent. Now, I'm not gonna read through this all, but this is a link of what we're doing as a building already, and especially with this expectation. Having incentives for the students, implementing logical consequences, and also being consistent from K to eight, being consistent of what we're rolling out with these expectations, but also meeting with these families to have some of the accountability, because it takes a village to raise a child nowadays, but we have to also deal with children on a case-by-case and really provide those resources, but as you can see that from the data that is shared with po- policy, a lot of the grade level trends with those students are, you're seeing a downward trend, which is a good thing. And some of my sources, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kenobi, I don't have a question for you, I do have a quick comment, I just want to say thank you. I do like the goal of trying to figure out that first class was important to students, even though, you know, the students heavily rely on their parents to get them here on time, but I think that'd be really fun if we could figure out some of the grade levels, you know, the, the curriculum or the classes that they really don't want to miss through today. So that would be a good push to get them here on time, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, and I want to give a thank you to a board member, uh, Williams Wilford, uh, thank you for the article, Reducing Student Absenteeism. Part of the changing of the beliefs of parents is changing their mindset about the importance of tardies. Tardy minutes do add up to lost instruction, so thank you for that article.
Thank you, are there any additional questions for Mr. Kenobi? Thank you.
No questions, Mr. Kenobi, but I do want to thank you so much also. Um, during a policy meeting, we had a very spirited conversation, and we were challenged to make sure that what we were doing was research-based, which we appreciated, and it forced us to go out and look more deeply at what we were doing and what had been successful in other school districts, but specific things uh, toward Lindop. So thank you all so much to the Policy Committee, Mr. Dawson, and Mrs. Williams Wilford. And the, uh, biggest thing that we have here to help students sort of get back on the right track, if they're missing time in the mornings, the, uh, even if they're assigned a detention, they're intentional about making sure that all of the work that they are having is what they've missed, so that they will not miss, and so it's not just a punishment where you sit there, you're actually making sure that you, uh, did not miss what happened earlier during the day. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Very good, and thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, Board of Education, Community, and Staff, want to update you on the building and grounds department. This is all the maintenance tickets that have been submitted since March twenty-first for the month. Uh, we had a total of twenty-three, uh, maintenance tickets submitted. Uh, right now, we have four pending, and these are all the various categories that was, uh, the tickets were submitted. So I'm excited to say that we have reached out and got professional development for our custodial staff. Uh, we partnered, we went through a program through, uh, uh, Illinois Associates and Peers and Fishes, known as ASPO. Custodians have completed one of the, one of four classes that they're gonna be taking, they took the essentials of custodial operations. So I just want to bring the custodians up, so they can just give you a brief detail, uh, detail, overall view of what they got from the class and what they can use here at the district. Got Mr. Coates and Mr. Saron, just to give you a brief.
Good evening, Board members, staff, and community. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Mr. Valentine for doing the legwork and getting us signed up for this program. Uh, also, I'd like to thank Dr. Jackson for giving us the push to better our group and team to help the district in the best way we can to be efficient. Uh, basically, the meeting was, um, about different strategies and procedures.
I'm sorry, is there any way you can turn up the volume, because I have mine maxed out, and it's, it's hard hearing.
Different chemicals and, uh, new, uh, robotics technology that a lot of people are, uh, looking at now. You've probably seen them in hospitals, little robots running around doing different things, and so, the easiest of the times, just to network with uh, other directors from numerous districts, and just to have an idea where we stand in the district and really, really serve you all there.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, like you said, um, first, thanks for giving us the opportunity, but what I got out of it was nice to network with some of the other people who were going through the same thing that we were going through, like shortage of workers, and, you know, just networking with different people, but we also noticed it was like a lot of directors that we thought we was the only custodians there, first, there was some in, uh, director, so they was asking about what, where y'all from, and so they say official ninety-two, they not official ninety-two. They didn't know, you know, they didn't know, so they get to ask us about, you know, just ninety-two, so make it long story short. They started, you know, asking questions, like, how they treating you, you know, so it was a little, oh, you know what's going on, you know.
Right.
That either, direct from, I'm a super, you people tonight, I'm like eight years, but anyway, it was a good thing, networking with different people, and then they had a topic that they was talking about, saying growth and development. And I took it as, you know, this class was like a step towards that, growth and development. That was, you know, that was it. It was a good experience.
So it was a good experience.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Ms. Alexander. Uh, for Member Alexander, to Mr. Valentine and staff, I just wanted to say that I think just getting the opportunity for, for, um, hearing the, um, the outcome of what, you know, you set forth with the vision, uh, I think professional development is very important. And I think that it will be, uh, I would be remiss to say that to see opportunities like this, to continue to grow and professional develop with the staff, I think is definitely something that will help us, um, you know, retain the talent that we have. You know, we don't want you all getting coached by other, uh, district.
Exactly.
Uh, but I do think in order to, uh, retain the talent that we have, and I, I hope everyone sees that, you know, this is just a, a step in the right direction to really help, uh, strengthen the staff that we have and get you all other opportunities for training, uh, and just to improve the growth in the facilities here at Lindop. So I'm really glad to hear you say that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenobi.
My sentiments exactly. I do lo- love the way that you reached out for finding, you know, something to help the staff here grow. Um, I'm, the door's open from the, uh, board. I think I can speak for everyone on this to say, when you see opportunities, let us know because we don't wanna lose you. We don't want no other directors pulling you. Okay? We family here, so we want you to stay. So the things that we do to, you know, for growth opportunities, that's awesome. I just wanna say congratulations and thank you for being open.
Thank you.
I think, you know, and let me just say one more thing. I'd like to also thank Mr. Baranic, who was also instrumental in that because he's the member of the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. So thank you, Mr. Baranic.
Thank you, Mr. Baranic.
Thank you, Mr. Baranic.
Thank you. Um, moving right along, um, I guess next we would have the Board President's report, and that would be myself. I know that several people have asked, when would the board be reorganizing? And I spoke with the Director of Elections and he had stated that fact that all the final calculations and with regards to voter registration would not be settled until May twenty-fifth. He said that it would, we would have to wait until after that date. So basically that would put us into June. So we can get together to try to figure out if we wanna wait until the June board meeting or if we wanna do something else. And that would conclude my, my, uh, President's report. Next, we'll have the Superintendent's. Does someone just join the meeting?
Hey, good evening again, uh, Board of Education, Administration, and Staff. And so again, as usual, we talked about a kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation and we are doing our hardest, um, here internally to make sure that we stay as a united team um, and keep focused on the seventy. Uh, Board goes three programs and services. If you look, we had a staff and service, uh, and we were actually talking about uh, return on investment. And so it was, uh, it was sort of solemn during this meeting. We talked about, um, how we might, uh, look to do some things differently and specifically with the paraprofessionals. Um, as the Board has asked us to sort of dig in and to begin to look and see what is working, what is not working, and making sure that we are getting a return on the investment. Uh, one thing that stood out for us is that, uh, Lindop is the only school in the state that has paraprofessionals that are not, uh, working specifically with special ed, uh, children. And what we're saying is that if we have, uh, additional people, we've got to be able to see the value that they're bringing. And we know that they are working hard, uh, to do that. And next year will be the year to really show, uh, what we're all made of. And so we're excited about, about that opportunity as well. Uh, next was, we have a new doctor in the house, Dr. Robinson. And she is also just, uh, completing her clinicals also for her administrative endorsement. So congratulations, Mrs. Robinson. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Dr. Robinson.
Doctor, Dr. Robinson, right?
Congratulations.
Okay, uh, Board New Composite Photo Day will be Tuesday, May sixteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll probably have to have another one since we found out about, uh, when the canvassing of the votes, votes will be finished and we had to wait until after May twenty-fifth. Board members, a doodle poll to come out with some different dates, uh, so that everyone, we can be in agreement and just, uh, knock this out if the intention is to have it before the June. Next, so on there we have our Prosperity Night and Kid Millionaire Night. And so we had eighth graders and their parents to come in and they talked about creating a foundational and generational wealth. Uh, they were also able, uh, to participate. So it was in interactive activities that happened. Uh, they received prizes. They were in a, um, money, sorry, a money vacuum where money was floating around where they had to try to catch the money and everything. And so it was exciting, but it was also exciting to be able to hear, um, how parents think about money and then also how that is carried on to the children. So trying to develop a healthy, positive mindset about money. Uh, we'll also be having, uh, another gentleman to come in, uh, Keith Johnson. I believe that's his last name. I don't wanna mess it up, but I believe it's Keith Johnson. And he'll be coming in to talk with the teachers, uh, during their breaks and being able to talk to them about what it is to invest, when they need to, and how they can, uh, make sure that they are ready for retirement when that time comes. So we are, uh, touching the staff as well as the students. Uh, Programs and Services, we have a Caterpillar cam. I'm going to allow Dr. Betts to come up and just sort of give us, um, a little intro on that and talk about it.
This is so exciting. I can't, I can't stop every day. I have to check the caterpillars to see how much they've grown. So the West Forty, um, I S C has the Caterpillar program, but during the pandemic, it stopped. And so we have not had our caterpillars and butterflies for several years. So this year, when they brought it back, we went big. And one of the things that, um, kind of jokingly, Mr. Baranic said we should have like a live stream. And I said, yes, we should. So Mr. Ellis Q set that up for us. Mr. Cossack has a set of caterpillars on his security desk and they are live streaming. This will go on our website tomorrow. So you'll be able to click and see what they're doing twenty-four seven. Very exciting.
And that concludes, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have committee reports. Personnel Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Ms. Alexander. Next meeting date is to be determined. Finance Committee Meeting, Ms. Griffin, Ms. Alexander. Next meeting date is to be determined. Pace Governing Board Meeting, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Morris, with Wednesday, April nineteenth, which is tomorrow at six P M. The next meeting is scheduled for May seventeenth at six P M. Next is the Safety, S E L Committee Meeting, Mr. Morris, Mr. Hannah. Next scheduled date is to be determined. Committee, Policy Committee Meeting, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Williams Wolford, Wednesday, April, April the eighth was at four thirty. Would you like to report on that meeting?
Uh, yes, just quickly, I think the, um, the Pace meeting is tomorrow, uh, the nineteenth. Not sure if it said the nineteenth or the seventeenth on here, but it's tomorrow the nineteenth. Um, uh, I would just be, be able to say, uh, sorry, that the biggest issue I think was in fact what Dr. Jackson mentioned, and it was about, you know, um, the information we were trying to put forward about how best to help the children who were having tardy and absence problems. Uh, outside of that, really, there was a lot of, um, review and monitoring. Um, Ms. Williams Wolford, would you wanna add to that?
No, I'm, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Jackson, did you wanna comment on a, uh, policy in particular? I think we, you know, obviously we went over some of them today in our, uh, consent agenda, but Dr. Jackson?
Uh, no. So the ones, uh, that were most, uh, critical and what we needed to really dive into was the tardy uh, policy and looking at that and just making sure that it is something that, uh, is research-based and that, uh, will fit for Lindop. And that concludes the policy meeting. I have no more comments.
Thank you. I show that the next meeting is scheduled for May third, two thousand and twenty-three at four thirty P M. Next, we have the Para C I A Committee Meeting, which is Mr. Morris and Ms. Taylor. The next meeting date is to be determined. Next is the Technology Committee Meeting, Mr. Hannah, Ms. Taylor, which was Monday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three at four P M. Would either one of you like to come on in?
I mean, everything that, um, we talked about in tech meeting. Ellis Q just laid it all out there ten minutes ago. So that was the, the basis of our tech meeting.
Thank you. I show that your next meeting date is to be determined. Next, we have the Community Engagement Committee Meeting, which is myself and Ms. Alexander, and that date is to be determined. Next is the Negotiations Committee Meeting, which is Ms. Alexander and myself, which is Thursday, March thirty at the five thirty P M. The next meeting date. Um, Ms. Alexander, is there anything that you would like to go regarding that meeting that I missed? Or did we even have that?
Yes.
Yeah, we did. It will be in, in both sessions. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I show the next meeting is April twentieth at five thirty P M. That concludes the committee reports. Are there any further public comments?
There are none.
If not, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that the board wants to close session of the Illinois School Code one twenty slash two, C one, two, four, eight, nine, and ten to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, or performance of a specific employees of a public body, collective negotiating matters. Evidence or testimony presented in open hearing or enclosed hearing was specifically authorized by the law, security procedures, school building safety and security, students, disciplinary actions or cases, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students at six thirty-nine P M.
Cheryl Griffin, I second. Can I get a roll call?
For President Griffin?
Yeah.
For Vice President Hammond?
Yeah.
For Secretary Taylor?
Yeah.
For Member Alexander? For Member Dawson?
Yay.
For Member Morris? Abson? For Member Williams Wolford?
Ms. Wolford?
Yay.
Okay, motion carries. We are now out of open session. Thanks all of you for coming out.
Thank you.